Here you go, Dr. Miller. Do it again. Do it again, Dr. Miller.
Now try it.
Call a meeting of order. Madam Clerk, if you would, call the roll, please.
Mr. Buckner.
Here.
Reverend Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Hood.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
Mr. Mayo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
Mr. Saunders.
Here.
Mr. Vogler. Mr. Whittle.
We have an invocation by Dr. Gary Miller. Follow our pledge of allegiance. Ask everyone to please stand.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, it's been a long two years. Forty-seven million cases of COVID-19 in this country. Seven-hundred-and-sixty-three Americans have died of this dreaded disease. More than both of our great wars in this century combined. What have we to be thankful for, Lord? How can we go on? But we must go on, Lord. We must pray for our brothers and sisters, our mothers and fathers and our children. We can be thankful that so many of our brethren, first responders, police, firemen, nurses, doctors, have come to the aid of their fellow man. Not caring about their color of their skin, what their religion is, or how much money they have. They have stood tall. And we can be thankful that our prayers have led to the recovery of many. That the plague has brought out the best in man and womankind. We have not given up. We persevered. We were determined. We will beat this. And we'll come out to the better. And carry on as a newly unified nation under God. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening to everyone here in chambers and those who are watching us home in River City TV. To those of you in the chamber, good evening to you all. Xavier Warren is home. Good to see you, Xavier. Under Communications, any citizens who desire to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Any citizen who desire to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward this time. Please state your name and your address for the record. And good evening to you, ma'am.
Good evening. I am Mary Foley and I live at 145 Sutherland Avenue. Tonight, I'm here to speak to you on behalf of Sacred Heart School and Church about the beloved Madonna icon that hangs above our Holy Family Gym on the way to the mall. In the early 1990s, this icon was built in the Dan Rivers School Field Mill. In 1992, the display graced the air above Dan Rivers School Field Mill its first Christmas until and every Christmas after until 2006. We all know the mill closed. In 2008, former Dan Rivers employee Odell Hudson, the Knights of Columbus, spearheaded by Charles Crumpler, Power Signs and Sacred Heart Catholic Church worked together to give the sign new life on our campus. It's lights up the sky overlooking the mall and a significant shopping district in Danville. During a time when people get lost in shopping, the Madonna and Child is a quiet and gentle reminder of what the Christmas season is all about. We are proud to be stewards of this wonderful part of Danville's heritage. It is estimated that the 60-foot wire mesh display has about 1,200 bulbs. When we moved it over, Power Signs bought up all the bulbs that there were in existence for it. And it's been nearly 20 years. And they're almost gone. So in order to the replacement bulbs are no longer available. And in order to preserve this beloved icon for future generations, it needs to be rewired, all the sockets replaced, and new LED bulbs installed. It is estimated that this renovation and restoration will cost between $15,000 and $20,000. Giving Tuesday, hashtag Giving Tuesday, National Day of Giving, is the Tuesday after Thanksgiving. This year, it falls on November 30th. As part of Giving Tuesday and I Give Catholic, we are asking for people's generosity to help us raise $20,000 to preserve this sign. The renovations and restorations have been quoted by Power Signs and they will take place next year for Christmas 2022. But rest assured, they came and checked her. She'll be lit up this year. Saturday after Thanksgiving is the vigil of the first Sunday of Advent. And she's lit about 6 o'clock following the 5:00 p.m. vigil mass. So how can you give? When I get home, I will paste on River City TV's comment section a link to I Give Catholic. You can go to Sacred Heart School's website, Sacred Heart School's Facebook page, Sacred Heart Church's website and Sacred Heart Church's Facebook page. And there are links right on the front. If you're not tech savvy, but you are a fan of this beloved icon, you can send a check to Sacred Heart Church or school and be sure to note in it that it's for the Madonna sign, so that we know what it's for. You can contact the school or the church office at your convenience with any questions. Any questions?
Just a comment. You give the address. First of all, thank you for being here this evening. And I've been watching that for years. Really, for years. What is the address for Sacred Heart? Just in case you have those who don't live in the city, who's watching us by River City TV. Well, what is the address for Sacred Heart?
Sacred Heart School is at 540 Central Boulevard. And for those
540? Let's go slow because some people may be writing this down. 540 Central Boulevard. Is that Danville, Virginia, 24541 or 24540?
24541.
Fantastic. Give that address one more time.
540 Central Boulevard, Danville, Virginia, 24541.
What's the telephone number? Now you're going to say something else.
And if you aren't familiar with where Central Boulevard, we're directly across the street from George Washington High School.
Questions, Council? Councilman Campbell.
Yes, most definitely. It's an icon. I look forward to seeing it every year. And we just commend your work and effort emphasizing the sacredness of the time of the season of event. And yes, I hope that the citizens will support. I will myself. But thank you so much.
Thank you. And Early Given is open. It closes at midnight on Tuesday, November 30th. But Early Giving is open, so if you click on the link, you can give now.
You know, the thing I admire about you, Ms. Foley, is most of the times persons will come to council and want the city to put out $15,000 or $20,000. You're looking for partnerships from everyone, and that means a lot. Dr. Miller?
Yeah, I just in this time of year, I never fail to look up as I come across the bridge and look for the symbol, Mother Mary. So it's a great thing for the city. It's an icon.
Councilman Mayo.
Thank you for giving the history of it too, Ms. Foley. Thank you for giving the history of it. You can't miss it no matter where you're at in Danville. You can't miss it.
Well, there's more history on the Give page. There's a whole, a little article and a video from Charles Crumpler, who was instrumental in getting this moved.
Ms. Crumpler, Charles Crumpler, thank you for what you do. Ms. Foley, anything else?
No, sir.
Well, thank you so much for being here. The address again for Sacred Heart is?
Sacred Heart School's address is 540 Central Boulevard, Danville, Virginia, 24541. And the telephone number, which is to my office,
Again, thank you so much for being here.
But if you're calling about the Madonna, you just tell who answers the phone and we'll know where to send you. Thank you for your time and gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We're still in communications from visitors. Anyone else who desires to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward this time. Please state your name and address for the record. And good evening, sir.
Do I have to take my mask off?
Yes, that's fine.
Good evening, Mayor. Mark Holland. I live at 204 Virginia Avenue. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here to bring a concern to city council in regard to the lack of paint on the pavement in the West Main Street area, the School Field area. There are a couple populations and communities I think are affected by this lack of paint. You have folks who are walking and running and riding trying to get healthy, stay healthy, be healthy, like I think is what the city is working towards. And you also have folks who have to walk places, who don't have vehicles, who have to walk about to get to the grocery stores and the drugstores. But in that area, we don't have any crosswalks west of Magnolia. So the entrance into Forest Hills neighborhood is the last crosswalk. And then to all of the bus stops throughout the School Field area, there aren't crosswalks. There aren't crosswalks across any of those roads. And then it's also, I think, a problem that there aren't any parking spaces painted on that part of the road, part of Danville. And so, as we all know, parking spaces and paint on the road serve as calming devices. And so the vehicular traffic through there is faster than it is on West Main Street in the Avery College area and on Main Street throughout the area. Because the roadway is appears smaller because of all the paint, the parking spaces and the bike path or bike paths. And I don't bring this here as a first request. I brought this issue to who I thought I was supposed to. And I followed up with people beneath that person. And what I'm not hearing, and I spoke, of course, Mr. Larkin reached out to me and asked what he could do. What I'm not hearing is "it will be done." And in my line of work, that's often how the trial ends. There's a directive from the bench or an order that says "it will be done." And crosswalks are very important. They're safety measures. We have them throughout the city. Y'all know they're important, but we don't have them in this neighborhood, and I don't know why. And I've asked before and I'm asking again. And my request is not for you folks to install crosswalks in this part of town or to paint parking spaces. It's to do it now. Not when the casino gets built. Not years from now after study. These folks deserve crosswalks so they can cross these roads safely and be protected. And our built environment protects our citizens. And currently, the built environment down this part of town isn't very safe, and it's not protecting these citizens. And I just think if you'll do it there, you know, I'll probably come back and ask for it in other parts of town as well.
Well, thank you so much for all first of all, thank you so much for all you do for the city. I wish I could give a directive tonight from this bench that says "it will be done." But this is the first I've heard of it. And so if you notice, and you've already taken care of this, if you notice on that podium, there are some cards of the city manager's address. So I will give you I'll tell you one directive that I will do. I will get with the city manager because you've always spoke with him and he heard what was mentioned today and see what can be done. Does that work?
Appreciate that.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much. And council, anything else from council members?
No, I just, as I understand it, not putting it off, I'll be in favor of it, but we have to get permission from other entities. Is that not correct, Ken?
Well, let's not discuss it now because
Yeah, but I'm just saying it's not something we can do tonight.
Well, I think the directive that we can give is to meet with the city manager. The city manager gives because it's a very good point. So let's just take it from there.
Okay.
As I said to Mr. Larkin, it seems to me if a stop sign was down, I wouldn't need to come here. You just say "the stop sign is down," and it would get taken care of. And these crosswalks are just as important. And slowing the traffic down is just as important. Because if the traffic's coming through at 30 miles an hour or 32, that little difference between 25 and 32, as someone who's out running on these roads every, you know, frequently, that's significant. And if it hits one of our citizens, a vehicle going 32 miles an hour because it looks like a speedway, that's going to significantly injure those people. So
Again, I don't mean to be repetitious, but thank you so much for all that you do.
Apologize for repeating this stuff.
And we'll be in touch. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you. We're still in communications. Anyone else who'd like to desire to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. And please state your name and address for the record. Good evening.
Lieutenant Antonio and Shante Hodges, 123 Henry Street, Danville, Virginia. We here at Salvation Army are here for the plea for the support of the council and all leadership for our Christmas season.
So if you are around and you see the red kettle bucket, a lot of people don't know that the funds that we raise for the kettle season is for the whole year. And it's not just for our angels. It's not just for our seniors. It's not just for the support of the Corps. But it also goes toward our youth programs. And we send kids to camp every year. We also service the community via rental assistance, utility assistance, our feeding programs each and every day. We have, all of the money that we raise towards the kettle goes back into our community. So we're calling on the support of the community to help us serve the great city of Danville this Christmas season so that we can expand our programs with the youth and with the seniors and everyone in our community.
Well, again, thank you too also for all that you do. Would you all put me and Barry Mayo down to ring the bell? I'm serious.
Yes.
I don't know. We're going to get together seriously. We're going to ring the bell. We want to help you all. We definitely want to ring the bell.
I was already here, though, because
Take your mask off. Take your mask off. You already signed us up?
I was already here, though, because we talked. But we will be there.
And anybody else who is willing to volunteer to ring, you can go to registertoring.com and just search for the Salvation Army of Danville and you can sign up to help us ring whenever you like.
Now, are you all serving Thanksgiving dinner too? You want to mention that?
We are. On Thanksgiving Day, 11:00 to 1:00, we will provide meal for over 300 people.
Now, do they just come by? Or just any specific, just come by Salvation Army on Henry Street?
Just stop by on Henry Street and come up to the doors.
What's the menu?
Well, we have turkey, ham. We have a little collard greens, some sweet potatoes, deviled eggs, potato salad, and some rolls. Yeah.
It's no cost. And it's no cost?
No cost.
No cost. Thank you all so much.
But Thanksgiving starts tonight.
Thank you so much for all you're doing. I'm looking forward to it. For years, I wanted to be able to support and I see your people out there doing a great job. So I want to thank you also for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're still in communications. Anyone else who desires to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Anyone else who desires to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is William Griffith. I live at 937, I mean 935 Green Street. I'm here tonight. I was here the last time we had city council meeting. And I'm asking city council to exercise their oversight and cancel or hold the sale of a property at 937, 939 Green Street. I'm going to cite a couple of different issues. The expert opinion that was commissioned stated that this property would be prohibitively expensive to rehabilitate, that it is highly unlikely that the proposed purchaser will be required to put forth the funds, the work in restoring this property back to a single-family dwelling and fix all the issues. This house has been on a merry-go-round of being sold and then returned because buyers quickly realized that this house is too expensive to renovate properly. The key word is "properly." The same expert opinion that was this is the one that cited that in rare cases, removing a home is actually more of an improvement to the neighborhood than taking, than keeping one and restoring it. This home was recently up for auction this year. The prospective buyer that's purchasing this property did not bid on this house at this auction. Instead, they were offered what seems to be like a sweetheart deal, seemingly secret because the auction for buying the house for a dollar. I've been told this whole time that I'm going to be keeping the loop when things change. I would have been a lot more proactive about this if it had been, if I'd been told differently and this house was going to no longer be cited to be demolished. The covenant for these houses, these $1 houses, were owner-occupant. That was changed so that this individual only has to have this property for five years and then they can turn around and flip it. This opens the door to yet another rental situation where the house is split into apartments. My understanding that the purpose of these $1 sales is to have owner occupants that will be invested in the neighborhood by living there. Both the after-auction sale and the change to these covenants were done without any input from me, any of the other homeowners in that area. The fact that we were told that it was going to be scheduled for demolition in my last conversation, we had to find out that the potential sale was coming out through a rumor mill. This leads the appearance that they were trying to get the deal done before anyone could do anything to object about it. It does seem just concerning to me. I'm aware and appreciate the city managers trying to provide relief to the community and seek solutions for the betterment of the entire city. These actions do not benefit the entire city, but a select few. This new amended contract is not a relief to the surrounding community, but an unjust frustration and extreme concern for the homeowners that are already trying to care for their homes. I'm going to go back to where I was last week just to remind everyone that this is from Richard Morris's review for the CAR. He says, "The firm understands that there are many people and organizations who object to the demolition of historic structures. Our philosophy is that every building should be saved whenever feasible. One must recognize when a building should be saved, demolished, reconstruct a building or infill with an empty lot with appropriate architecture." Like I said before last week, this house is on an extremely small lot. The Hattens that live on the other side can open a window and touch it. I now have, what? How many years that I'm going to have to deal with a construction? This isn't a rehab. This is going to be almost equivalent to what seems like new construction. I'm concerned about the asbestos. I'm very concerned also about lead paint. I want to make sure it's done correctly. I do not think that I do not think that this is the best idea for the city taxpayers to have money that is just going out. The purpose of these $1 programs, as it keeps being said, doesn't seem like this was its purpose. The purpose was to put homeowners that are going to invest in the community, not real estate investors that are going to come in and look to fill their pockets. Thank y'all for your time, and I appreciate what y'all do.
Thanks. Thank you so much. We thank you for being here tonight. We're still in communications. Anyone else who desires to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Anyone who desires to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Under meeting minutes, council, what's your pleasure? Councilman Buckner?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second by Councilman Campbell. Discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Hood.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Mayo.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler. Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Under ID, may review a general fund, financial states, minutes. Michael, good evening to you.
Good evening, city council. In your agenda packet tonight, I believe you have the general fund results through the end of October. That is the first third of the year, or 33% of our fiscal year complete. Some of my comments at this point are starting to sound like a broken record from month to month. But I rather like the song, so I'm happy to keep singing it. Our revenues of about $27 million are tracking well with budget. And they show an increase of about $1.8 million over last year. The primary sources for this increase relates to the collection of delinquent real estate taxes to the tune of about $470,000. That's 45% of our budget at this point, as well as local consumer taxes, which are nearly $900,000 over the prior year. Those local consumer taxes are primarily made up of sales tax, which is set to outpace budget. It's currently at 35% of our budget. Again, we're 33% of the year complete. It's $260,000 more than last year. Mills tax is the most significant item in the local tax category. It's currently at 38% of budget, or $557,000 over last year. Lodging taxes are also performing well at about 48% of budget and $178,000 over last year. The other revenues, such as state and federal revenues, are on target with projections at this time. So no concerns at all on revenues. Expenditures are also tracking well with budget. Our departmental spending is at 30% of budget, so about 3% under budget at this time. Our non-departmental expenses, which is primarily our group health insurance, that can often be, as you know, unpredictable. We do our best to budget for that. It was currently at 31.5%, so trailing budget at this point, which is good. The only significant change in our expenditures has to do with the timing of funding sent to Danville Public Schools. As I've mentioned in previous months, this year, they're back to in-person instruction as opposed to virtual learning. So that is, of course, more costly this year than last year with the related auxiliary services as well. Another thing about schools is it takes them a few months of operation each school year in order to start drawing down state funds. And so often, they use the local funding first. So that's what you'll see as you compare this year's funding of public schools to last year. Again, that is a set amount budget for the schools. So at the end of the year, it really doesn't make a difference. It's going to be the total that's budgeted. Just other issues or other items in the finance department. Our bond issuance is scheduled to occur very soon. All three of the credit rating agencies, Moody's, S&amp;P, and Fitch, affirmed our AA credit rating once again. They emphasized our stable financial position. The agencies were very complimentary of our economic development and tourism projects that are on the horizon. And personally, I think when we start to see that we start to see that really impact our finances, that we'll be in position for a credit upgrade at some point in the future. Uh, the general obligation bonds that we traditionally issue each year will go out for bid tomorrow morning, so next time I see you, I'll be able to tell you a little bit about the interest rate that we'll be getting on those. Uh, in addition, our audit report is scheduled to be presented to you all on December twenty-first at the work session. Uh, the audit is just about complete and still to this point, there have been no material changes to the, uh, numbers that I presented for June thirty. Uh, so other than that, uh, unless there's questions, that's all I have this evening.
Madam?
Sean, um, did you have a, a, just sort of a feel of what the, um, impact for the, concert in the county did, did to the city?
Uh, I believe we saw an impact of that in this, uh, financial report. Uh, like I said, the lodging taxes were already at forty-eight percent of budget. Um, I guess in comparison, the month of October, we, it's on a month lag, so any lodging that occurred in September, we would realize in October. Uh, the monthly collection of lodging taxes was over two hundred thousand, which is quite a bit more than we, we see in one given month. So we have, we have seen some impact from that.
Okay, and I was just wanting to clarify this on the, it's a transfer to schools of thirty-three thousand. Hold on a second. So what's the, uh, can you tell me the amount of money we're gonna transfer to the schools this year?
Yes. Um, the, the standard budget for the year plus the carryover that they had from the prior year is about thirty-three million, a little north of thirty-three million.
We out of the loop when, I thought it was around twenty-four or twenty-five?
It is. Uh, last year, they, they had quite a bit of savings because they were not having in-person instruction all year, and so that unspent budget, they do get to carry forward and it gets added to, you know, the current year's, uh, allocation to schools, so.
Then that was a million-dollar buffer we had in them, for them anyway, to...
They were allowed to carry over all unspent funding from last year.
So that's more than the million dollars?
Yes, yes.
Procedure? We, I mean, if we, if we let them carry a million forward that they do not use in that...
In, several years ago, we did have a, a parameter set up where they could only carry forward so much per year, but over the last few years, we've allowed them to carry over any unspent money. Uh, in many years, it's designated towards capital for schools. Um, I guess given the circumstances, it was, it was, seemed allowable for them to carry over the unspent money from last year. Um, addition for the last several, three or four years.
Anyone else? Thank you so much, Michael. Keep up the good work. Under, um, item B, consideration of approving a moral obligation with the Virginia Community Capital for construction of a shell bill. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Buckner?
May I like to make a motion that we approve a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a moral obligation agreement by and between the City of Danville, Virginia, the Virginia, and the Virginia Community Capital of Virginia Banking Corporation.
Second by Councilman Mayo, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
On the communication, city manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to give you an update. Uh, the Parks and Recreation Department has developed a couple of conceptual plans for the Doyle Thomas Park and Blue Park possible locations. We'll be coming to a work session to share that information with council at an upcoming meeting and y'all can decide which one is the priority. Of course, there, we had presented Pumpkin Creek as well, so that's still in play, just whatever the council prefers, but we'll give you that information. As you, uh, may remember, the budget included about a million dollars each for each splash pad. Uh, depending in each, and you'll learn more about this at the work session, but depending on the topography and the location and the existing infrastructure at each of those locations, the amount of amenities that can be placed on those sites for that million dollars will be slightly different, but we'll get into that detail at the work session coming up. And once we get direction from council on which one to go forward with, we'll begin, uh, working as quickly as we can to implement that and, and hopefully get it up and running for next summer, if possible. Uh, also related to Parks and Recreation, I wanted to make you aware that our Parks and Recreation Department plans in the near future to, uh, engage with the community with regard to youth athletics. Um, it's no secret that youth athletics throughout the country really has declined recently. A lot of, uh, little league and soccer programs are in decline because people, kids are doing other things. Um, so we wanna engage with community, make sure that we have a program for youth athletics that makes sense for, uh, our community. Uh, unfortunately, like a lot of other organizations, we're experiencing staffing issues and it is particularly hitting our youth athletics department pretty, or division, pretty hard. Um, so, but we're gonna be able to take the opportunity of an opening, uh, to get new leadership in and, and try to revamp things, um, and make it better for the future.
Well, thank you so much. I'm excited about that. Um, not excited about we're losing staff, but we, uh, there's been a lot of conversation in the community in regards to our athletics, how we regrouping our athletics, our future for our athletics department. This is a perfect time and I appreciate you all for looking into that. I also, um, to you and as deputy city manager, this is a perfect time to see exactly how our gang prevention coordinator, director, how this can also be a partnership with that, with our police department, with everything we got going on with the Peace Center. This is a perfect opportunity to see how we can collaborate a lot of that within our Parks and Recreation. This is good news, so thank you so much. Great.
See, it is an opportunity, uh, to, you know, really get involved in the community, hear what they want, and hopefully get a big response.
Sounds good. Thank you. Deputy city manager? Thank you, sir. City attorney?
Very briefly, we don't bring a whole lot to council, but next meeting, I think we've got four resol, four council actions we'll be bringing forward. I wanted to let you know, uh, we'll be bringing forward resol, uh, ordinances to institute or impose the new tax that has been passed by the citizens. That'll be two readings, so the next meeting we'll have, we'll have the first reading in public hearing and then the second meeting we'll do that. We'll also have a, uh, ordinance moving the elections from May to November, uh, and then we'll also have some edge, uh, some, uh, resolution dealing with the opioid settlement that would, will direct me then to be able to sign everything that we need to do to, to get that moving. So just wanted to give you sort of a heads up about next meeting.
Been very busy. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you both. Um, city clerk? Roll call, please.
Uh, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to rekindle off what we heard tonight with the, the, definitely kettle drive going on at the Salvation Army, if we know, that takes place every year and do the talk to the lieutenant and his wife. I've been talking to him a lot. Thank y'all for coming and, uh, we gotta continue that progress because it benefits so much in our community. And, uh, secondly, with the, with the Madonna and the, the showing of that every year, uh, it's, 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 I'm glad to see and hear the history of that and see that that's gonna carry on and what has to happen to keep that going. Um, I wanna give, uh, some hats off to Kelly Cunningham for her fashion, uh, show that she had, uh, huge success, I heard, wasn't able to be there, but I heard a lot about it and Brian, give her the congratulations for me. But that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, yesterday, many of us attended the dedication at the D C C of the New Welding Center, eighteen million dollar investment, and I believe the mayor and myself and Mr. Mayo and who else was there?
Councilman Vogler, Councilman Saunders.
Saunders, we were there. Uh, great event, because this is right up our alley. This is workforce training, and they train these young men and, and women. Uh, they had a class there and I looked in on it. There were at least four women in that class. They train them not only to be machinists, but automotive technicians, welders for local industries like Morgan Olson, uh, Jarrett Welding. And I took the tour and it's just a first-rate facility. I learned that they can, uh, obtain sixteen different certifications in welding there and graduate, and then expect to get anywhere from eighteen to twenty-eight dollars an hour to start. So it's just, again, it's right up our alley. Uh, secondly, a shout out to Reverend Cecil Bridgeforth. With his permission, he was admitted to the hospital today and he wants everybody to pray for him, uh, for his speedy recovery. Uh, I said, "Well, good, the council can relax tonight, 'cause I guess you won't be here." And, uh, but just kidding aside, he brings a lot of issues, uh, to the council, taxes, uh, people that can't pay bills, not, just for people all over the city. He's a champion of their rights and not only there, but not only in El Negro where he has his, uh, uh, church, but all over the city. So we, we certainly hope he gets better. And I said, "We can relax tonight, 'cause you won't be here to, to, uh, tell us what we're doing and doing right and wrong." And he said, "Well, now wait a minute. Haven't you heard the story of the Bible where the man was picked up on his bed by his friends and brought in to be healed?" And he said, "You better be careful. I might be there tonight." So, uh, we hope he gets well soon. And finally, um, I was in Europe lately and, uh, they're suffering from plague problems too, but I just something that I wanna mention, um, just to ask you, what do the cities of Prague, Pilsen in Czech Republic, Vienna, Austria, Bratislava, the capital of Slovakia, all have in common? They have plague monuments. In the thirteen hundreds and fifteen hundreds, the black plague ravaged Europe. A quarter of the population died. The people prayed and put up monuments to thank God that their city had been spared, or at least partially spared, from the plague. Uh, it wiped out many cities entirely. They only had monuments in prayer. We also have prayer, and prayer is powerful weapon, but we have one more thing they didn't have. We have the ability to synthesize vaccines. God has given us that ability. We need to use it. I read today where seventy percent of the U.S. population is now vaccinated, only seventy percent, and something like fifty percent in this area or less. We need to utilize, utilize all the weapons. Please get your vaccination. If you don't wanna do it for yourself, do it for your children and do it for your parents. You might have a mild case, but do you really wanna be the instrument of their death, causing them to die? And we see that again and again. Grandchildren get sick, they have a mild case and their grandparents die. Uh, children, uh, young people get sick and they live, but their parents die. Do you really want that on your conscience? Please get that vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also, uh, agree in the sense of Reverend Bridgeforth for certainly praying for him and his family with the best, the best for him. Also, congratulations to Dr. Mario Mickles, Danville Community College Welding Center dedication yesterday. And about a month ago, I was talking to an employer and he had an opening for five hundred welders, and he said that in about three months, he'll need five hundred additional welders. A thousand jobs out there and Danville Community College is stepping up, uh, to the challenge. Really, really pleased about that. And, uh, finally, let me just welcome Mr. Warren. Glad you're here, sir. Uh, a church member and glad you're back home and spending time with family. Uh, for those of you who may not know, uh, Mr. Warren is an N F L agent, you know, National Football League. So, uh, Mr. Vogler reminded him that Dallas Cowboys won Sunday, I think it was forty-three to three. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
He's gonna have the redskins.
Madam Clerk?
No comment.
Uh, maybe I can get him to speak with my son, 'cause I, uh, I apologize for coming into, uh, uh, meeting a, a little bit late this evening. I heard you all talking about youth sports, uh, a few minutes ago, and, uh, that's where I was actually at, at at Dan Daniel, the Danville Devil Dogs, whose quarterback is a young man named Kingston Vogler. They won their playoff game tonight, sixteen to nothing, so, um, I'm proud of him. He, he's worked really hard and, uh, but they, they'll be playing in the championship. Anybody wants to come see a fun, uh, youth football game, the championship is this Saturday at a Dan Daniel at four o'clock. Um, but, but a great group of, uh, young men on that team and I've really enjoyed watching them. And, um, I've been yelling out there, so I'm losing my voice. I apologize, but really, really proud of the Devil Dogs. If you guys see this later, I don't know if kids watch city council meetings, but if your parents see it, good job, Devil Dogs. Thank you.
Great job. Nothing. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, real quick, uh, just thank everybody that came out to the Brightleaf Brew Fest this past weekend. It was the fourteenth annual and it was an absolute blast. Um, there were, as always, a, a packed place. The whole thing was just a, just a blast. Um, that's all tonight. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yes, I wanted to, to ditto some things already. It's been stated, uh, to Reverend Bridgeforth, I talked to his son this afternoon and we're praying for him and God will carry him through, and I know that he will. Secondly, I wanna ditto what Lee Vogler was talking about, the youth. I just wanted to commend our city manager and the mayor and the deputy city manager for the initiatives for our young people, because it does make a difference within our community. And lastly, I just wanna wish everybody that you have a blessed, safe, and happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy your family. For all the deaths that we've been experiencing across the nation, in this region and our town, do not take anything for granted and, uh, also be protected of what Dr. Miller was talking about. Make sure that you take the shot, because we'll be closer, we won't be as outside, be more closer. And science is saying, saying to us that we can expect another outbreak, so protect yourself and protect your family. Have a blessed holiday. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. You've heard, um, tonight, mention of ribbon cuttings, and I wanna thank Dr. Miller and Councilman Saunders in regards to yesterday at D C C. City manager and I spoke about it today. Uh, there's such an awesome program. Shannon Hare and his foundation and Dr. Mickles, as you heard, stated, uh, they also implemented, as Councilman Saunders stated, about five hundred welding jobs. They implemented a program called Women of Welding, and it was exciting to hear that yesterday about Women of Welding. If you haven't seen that building at D C C, you need to go by. The ribbon cutting was absolutely phenomenal. Speaking of another ribbon cutting, this past Friday, Fashion House, Kelly Cunningham has got a wonderful, beautiful place over there and it just is, Brian, you all have done a superb job to Kelly and her mother Kathy and Paula and Casey. Wonderful job. Tomorrow, speaking of ribbon cuttings, I'm cutting another ribbon at the Soul of the Sea, a new seafood restaurant at twelve noon, um, young man Justin Williams. And Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, he's traveling back and forth. You got your mic on? He's traveling, tell him where he's traveling back and forth from.
Back and forth from Korea.
He's traveling back and forth from Korea, and he's gonna be here tomorrow to, for the celebration of his grand opening of the Soul of the Sea, tomorrow at twelve noon. Meet us there, it's on North Main Street, across from the, uh, playground. And then on this following, coming Monday, Lazy Bee Bar and Grill, L G Clark, we'll be cutting another ribbon. Uh, Monday at twelve noon at the Lazy Bee Bar and Grill, used to be six one six on North Main Street. So it's spreading. It's going from downtown all the way up North Main Street and we're real excited about all these ribbon cuttings. Also, I'm gonna thank council and the school system for city manager, deputy city manager for allowing me, two years ago, Councilman Vogler and I talked about bringing back the basketball tournament for George Washington High School, and when we brought it back with a great committee of persons, if you all see our committee, it's an awesome committee of persons, and we named that basketball tournament the Harry Johnson Basketball Committee. We're excited because we're bringing it back this year. We missed last year due to COVID. We're bringing it back this year. There are two new co-chairs. I stepped down, Sylvia Brooks and Shelby Irving, our co-chairs, and Reed Taylor's still on this. We're excited about this holiday shootout, shootout this year. We really think, as Councilman Campbell stated as I close, um, think of some things, this being a month of thankfulness. It's been so much going on. Think of something that you could, a, a good deed or a donation or something that you could do, just be a blessing to someone. We've all been truly blessed even through this pandemic, but if there's someone, if you can say a kind word, Thanksgiving is next week, whatever you can do. To the city manager and deputy city manager, I do need you all to stand up for a second, because, um, I'm one of your bosses. I could, I can ask you all to do this. I wanna say to you both, uh, thank you so much. Today, yesterday, um, I spoke with you in regards to staffing our city staff, and you all, uh, to hear the comments that you make about our city staff and the team that you talked about and the awesome team that you talk about. And I just wanna say to you both, you don't like the accolades, but to hear on the phone, I, I, sometimes I wish I worked for you all and I wish your staff can hear the way that you all talk about your staff. And now to see the direction that you're going into with Parks and Recreation, which we hear a whole lot about, as Councilman Campbell just stated, I'm just proud of you both and can you all join me in giving them a big hand for all the work that they do? Now, while you all standing, clocking soup, standing up, I don't wanna leave you out. Give them a hand. Sincerely appreciate you all. Um, a lot of these ribbon cuttings, Arnold and, you don't see Arnold and Mark Aaron, you all, they are behind the scenes, and we just appreciate everything that our staff do. Mark is going, he was with us Friday, he's gonna be with us tomorrow. Arnold is always behind the scene, but Sherman, you always talk about the thousand-plus city employees, but these persons here, thank you for what you do. And once again, please, this week, find someone to be kind to. You should be doing it all the time, but it's a special week, Thanksgiving, which you're sitting at home with your family. Just want you all to know, council, I appreciate everything you all do. On that note, this meeting is adjourned. Dr. Miller?